Yeah, my main page, it's streaming everything.
Is anyone still waiting to order from a server? Put your hand up, otherwise I'm going to get started. This looks good. Wait till everybody's seated. Do we need more chairs? Was that you, Commissioner Hughes? Good morning and welcome to the event. I am Rebecca Seifert, I am the host of the event. I am but a citizen. I am not here today to represent any campaign, any candidate. I am here in hopes that we can learn more about the folks who are wishing to serve our community. There have been a number of these events. And quite honestly, in my mind, a lot of them have been boring. There was no substance. And there was a bit of BS lying around. I am hoping that this is going to be a BS-free zone. Okay? There's going to be some harder questions answered. And as I said to the newspaper, I will interrupt. Because we citizens want substance. Okay, so, and it's no offense, but please, we are looking to you for heart and guts. Okay, we don't want hand responses that we heard at every one of these events. "Oh, I am all about balance." "I am all about transparency." "I am all about..." No. No, we want substance, so please, do us that service. I've got hands up. I'm going to explain that in just a moment. And ma'am? That's what she was asking. Okay. The format has changed a bit. First of all, let me do some housekeeping. I would like everyone, if you could, to silence or turn off your cellphones. I would like to have a moment of silence for those who have been affected by Matthew, and who will continue to suffer effects from Matthew, and then we will stand and say the pledge. If you could all stand, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. And now on to format. This has been one of my largest challenges. My original thought was that this was going to be pure debate format. And by pure debate, I don't mean two people going head-to-head, but two people standing up there responding to the same question within each district. As you see, we have a couple of people who aren't with us today. That brings their just added challenges to my format decision-making. And let me explain the absences. First of all, Debbie McDowell sent me a statement to read to the folks as to why she was not going to be able to attend. Let me pull that up, and I will read it for you. Maybe. Dear voters, candidates, and moderators, every once in a while, we are reminded how precious life truly is and how curveballs can be thrown to shatter even the best-made plans. This past week, my husband and I have been out in Ohio due to the unexpected death of my husband's brother. He was very young, he was only 53, and he passed away due to natural causes. Obviously, this has taken a toll on the entire family. Northport has been my home for 24 years. We raised our family here, our children graduated from Northport High. I am an advocate for preserving Northport's uniqueness along with balanced growth and development. I want to preserve why you moved to Northport while at the same time have Northport quote "achieve anything" as we continue to grow and prosper. I could only make one campaign promise, and that promise is to conduct myself in a respectful and professional manner. My actions are the only thing I can control. All votes require at least a three-person majority vote. My professional and respectful conduct will be necessary when we are discussing difficult issues and when I ask the hard questions of staff. The ULDC, the comprehensive plan, the city charter, and the budget are four documents that I am very familiar with. During the cranberry and price development, we were successful in some changes to the ULDC, so I know the process. I have attended commission meetings and workshops. I know how it feels to speak about an issue you are passionate about only to hear the buzzer ring and be told, "Time's up, go sit down." I often ask myself, "Did they even hear me or the other public commenters?" If I earn your vote on November 8th, yes, you will hear. Yes, I will respond to your emails, and yes, I will answer your phone calls. It's called respect and part of the privilege to be your commissioner. There are no short or simple answers regarding the pool, a hospital with the widening of Price Boulevard jobs, War mineral springs, accountability, clear-cutting, and the multitude of other issues affecting our city. To give you a one-line zinger would be grossly unfair to you, the informed voter. Why? Because there are many tentacles to each of these issues. However, I can assure you, I will do what's money, but belongs to you, the taxpayer. Each issue has many solutions, not just one. Let's engage the citizens and the experts alike. Northport deserves a well-fought-out solution to these hard issues. Let's get the job done instead of kicking the can down the road to another 10 years or more. Thank you for coming, and remember, you get to vote not only for the president, the state representatives, county commissioners, hospital board, and judges, but you also can vote for me, Debbie McDowell. So I just did my Debbie. That's why Debbie is not here, and that was her statement to all of you. At 2:07 this morning, I didn't get it at 2:07, but 2:07 this morning, I received an email from Mr. Hanks advising that he would not be able to attend. He did not give a reason for not attending. I apologize. He had confirmed with me about a week ago that he would be here, but he's not. So we will go on with those who are attending. The format, back to the format. If we were able to have all six of the candidates here, and they could discuss within each district an issue in true debate form, that would have been one thing, but we don't have that opportunity. So, I mixed it up a little bit. And this, I love New York City hat, are questions. In a box that my mom used to keep tools in, I have candidates' names. We're going to pick two candidates out of this box and a question out of that hat. And that's how we're going to know who's speaking and what they're speaking to. And that way, there's no saying, "Oh, you gave them hard questions, you gave them easy questions." You in any way, shape, or form formed this debate into anything but truth. We also have some members from the community who are going to participate in the process, because I get tired of hearing myself. We have Joan Samloin. They're all sitting over here. You can wave and say hi to Joan. Our candidates. We have two candidates here in District 1, and we have Vanessa Carison and Cory Hutchinson. In 2, we have Jack Winmore. In 3, Andrew Sias, and a chair for Debbie in her absence. Have I missed anything else? You know, she just asked if people will be rising and standing or coming forward when they're answering the questions. I've been back and forth on that for a loo... Going to start with... Debbie? Yes, 2 minutes.
You forgot to mention the 2-minute limit, and I'm the loud mouth that gets to say, "2 minutes!"
Joan's the loud mouth. She gets to say 2 minutes. Keep an eye on her hand. And we'll take it from there. Thank you for reminding me of that. So, let's get on with the questions.
I will try to get to candidates, but Vanessa's sort of in the corner.
Get that out of the way. Then we'll start picking questions from that. Oh, we'll have all of you respond to this one. It's my party. With a new medical marijuana measure on the upcoming ballot, I would like to talk a little bit about this. First, are you familiar with the commission's conversations about medical marijuana? And what are your thoughts on dispensary locations and grow operations within our city? And we're going to start from the left on this one. Vanessa?
So the question is, "Am I for medical marijuana?", which would be yes. And the reason is that I have seen pills destroy more than one member of my family, and I can't tell you how many I've seen destroyed by marijuana, wait, none. So, medical marijuana has a purpose. It's not that you can get it off the streets. It's not that you're going to be able to go to every corner and get it. It's for people who truly are suffering. And I know for a fact that there have been several people suffering, and if they could only have a different alternative versus oxycodone or any other hardcore drug. As far as dispensaries in the area, I think that we need to be very careful. I think that we can set policy that makes sure that those dispensaries are not seen from the outside. See? Sorry, God. We need to make sure that those dispensaries aren't things on the outside that would actually allow children in there. We need to be careful, because I do know that they have gummy bears, and they have lollipops, and all these... We need to be very careful that there is no commingling of the children and that it is done in a professional manner, and maybe even placed in an area where it's way away from school. So that would be my only concern. And again, we as a commission can set policy for that.
I am in favor of medical marijuana as well. I think it will be a great help to a lot of people who are going through debilitating diseases. As for the grow operations, we have to be careful, as Ms. Carison said. But not only that, we have to do it in a clean, professional, presentable way with dispensaries and grow operations. You could maybe have some of those in rural areas of the community that are way out there, that are not easily seen. I don't want these type of things right in the middle of the city. Do it clean, do it professional, do it presentable. But there is a place for this, and we can set the balance so that there are no problems. Have community conversations on it and get everyone involved.
Good morning. I would like to agree with what my foregoing colleagues have said. I would like for us to put together a citizens advisory board that includes medical professionals, that includes law enforcement, that includes other citizens. I received a 52-page document from my colleague, Commissioner Christine Robinson, either last night or early this morning. I have not had a chance to read it yet, but the county is absolutely moving forward with looking at and anticipating what is going to happen, you know, once the referendum item is voted on on November 8th. I absolutely support medical marijuana. I believe we can be creative, proactive, and accommodate the right tightness of rules, position, image, et cetera, and generate some revenue for our city that we can use for things like a hospital, or infrastructure, or other things that really are very, very expensive. So I support it. And as far as the commission's action so far, it's been more of a "let's wait and see" with a conversation and workshop that the Activity 6 area, if I have my numbers straight in my head, would be the one to be thinking about at this point. But an advisory committee would help us think through zoning and other kinds of questions. Thank you.
First, thank you for everybody coming out here tonight. Medical marijuana, it's on the ballot. If it passes, Northport should be prepared for it. We also have a zoned area existing for adult areas. That could be an area that could be used, so it's away from schools, as far as grow houses. But we should be prepared, because one of the things Northport we fall behind in is we do not plan. We have to plan for things in advance. Typical example, bad planning. Imagine school, the parking situation with parents picking them up. Built a school, that's wonderful, but they didn't plan for the travel. We have to anticipate this with medical marijuana, so it impacts our city in a positive way, and that we do get the tax revenue that it encouraged. Thank you.
I got a microphone that I could turn on and off, but now I can't turn it on. Okay. This one works. Okay, yes.
Oh, it's for, but it's whichever way. But we have to be prepared for it.
Yeah, people who are suffering from cancer, it's yes.
Okay, moving on to the next question. Sam Jones, you have a question for all of our candidates to answer?
Yeah, I sure do.
Hold on, let me get you a microphone. Yeah. It's in front of the speaker, so if you can just kind of stand over there a little bit so you don't go "Eeeehhh."
Why is the wild... Am I on? Yeah. Why is the wild duck wild? Always wanted to ask that. No, let's get serious for a second. This pertains to the charter amendment that's on the upcoming ballot. And the commission adopted an ordinance placing the charter on the ballot. However, this ordinance contains a section that creates a governance issue. Specifically, it's Section 9.2 of the ordinance. That's of the ordinance. And that basically delegates to the city attorney... And remember, the city attorney is a bureaucratic, non-elected position, but it delegates to the city attorney the power to amend our charter, specifically to an amendment that is supposedly adopted by the citizens. So there's a couple of facts that we've got to get out on the table. The first one is, there's a term in there called "conforming amendments." These are the amendments that... Excuse me. These are the amendments or amendment to adopted charter change language. In other words, you have a charter amendment on the ballot, you approve that, citizens approve that, then that then says that the city attorney can go in and change that. So he's changing the charter that we all voted for, or some of us voted no, but majority voted for. And that's called a conforming amendment. And then, so basically what he's doing is he's writing amendments to our charter without any of our input, without any input from the city commissioners whom we elect. This is a slippery and dangerous slope to be on, because quite frankly, a non-elected person changing our charter in this specific small case, but where does that stop? So hang on, just wait. Be patient, I'm setting the stage for it, okay? There's another one that says it includes transitional provisions. So that means you can write provisions to implement the charter amendment. I thought that was up to the commissioners. So the question is, very briefly, do you believe the citizens... Do you up there believe the citizens should approve the amendment or deny the amendment? Back to you, Rebecca.
Thank you, Sam. So just to reiterate, after the information that he presented, we all should certainly do our homework on this charter amendment. But the question to the candidates is, do you believe, and I guess, are you voting yes or no on this charter amendment? And we're going to start with Cory on this one.
I do believe that the citizens should deny it this time around, because you look at Section 9.02 of the amendment, that's where I have a concern, where it says the city attorney can revise to the extent necessary. You know, how far does that go? What extent is that? That's my concern. I believe it is meant to discuss the formatting of the charter, not the content, but since there is potential for there to be abuse by a city attorney, whether it's this one, whether it's one down the road, or whoever, because there was a potential there for abuse, I would say let's err on the side of safety. We'll vote it down this time, and the next commission could rewrite it. Charter review board could come back with something else, and we could put this on a ballot at a later time.
I agree, and I really could not say it any more eloquently than Mr. Hutchinson. Thank you.
A minor disagreement with you, Sam. It's not a slippery slope, it's a cliff. This is trying to attempt to solve things backwards. The charter amendment should be written correctly. The lawyer has input when it's being done. It should not be something afterwards. It's the citizens who are voting on it, and the commission, and the charter review board, to absolutely vote against it, as I will.
This I have stood very solidly on and have made videos on and have voiced my opinion from day one. Absolutely not. We have seen in the past how this city attorney has taken his authority to a measure that is beyond anyone's idea. And we've also seen how one word can make a difference. So I would, no way would I approve this. That does not mean that when the charter is revised and revisited, and there's a whole slew of them that are going to come to the commission for amendment, that this can't be reworked into it, and we can see how the citizens believe whether it should be there or not. But this particular one, absolutely not. And just for history's sake, this is not the first time that an ordinance has not mirrored what it is that the question is on the election, because the district was very similar. The districting said one thing as a question for the charter, but if you read the entire ordinance, it said another. So please, please, read the ordinance that's attached to these amendments.
Thank you very much. Okay. Mama's little box is over there. Joan, could you pick two names? That little box right in front of you. Sam, you're going to do a second question a little bit, right? Or do you want to do it now?
I don't care, your call.
Let's wait a little bit. We're going to start this process. Joan is going to pick two names out of the hat or the box. And Suzanne is going to pick a question out of this hat.
Andrew?
You got number one, and the names go back in the hat? No, not that.
No. The next two will be the people who are not called on this time.
Yeah, Andrew and Cory.
Okay, and I have a question here that was chosen out of the hat. And it says... It's not that long, but it's a doozy. Okay. There have been numerous scandals, questionable situations in our city over the past many years. Many have been highlighted in the media. FEMA, the FEMA scandal, the "Come and Get Your Bite", the Slashpad Follies, and I can smell that F-A-L-L-I-E-S, Follies, defunding the lieutenants, lease contracts signed by tenants prior to commission approval of the leases, just to name a few. So while we all understand that the commission is a legislative body, and the city manager is responsible for day-to-day operations, to these issues, we can't continue to sweep things under the rug. Who is going to answer these questions when they are brought up? And then, do you support an independent citizens review board for complaints made by citizens and employees? And if so, how do you envision it engaging with the commission? So Cory got to speak first, the last round, so Andrew, you're up.
The king of scandals, or anything, even if it's not a scandal, is to bring it out in the open. The last thing you do is try to hide it, because hiding something makes it even look worse than it is. The independent citizens review board should be for different areas, not only just one general one. You can set one up as for police, for fire, for the community, so that they focus on different items individually, not just focusing broadband, so they can focus. That should have an immediate impact on the commission in supplying information that can be enacted on. FEMA was probably the worst one, because it really could have destroyed our city losing critical funding. It should have been immediately done with an independent investigation. Anytime something comes up with the city, if it is even a hint of scandal... There's a famous line, "Purer than Caesar's wife," that my dad used. You always have to make it look perfect, even if there's a hint of scandal, even if there is not one there. So yes, I would be in favor of a citizens review board. How I would incorporate it, depending on what it is. If it's a police, have some police officers on it who are community-involved. Have some citizens who are involved. And people from different activist groups. And that way, you would have input for a balanced approach. Thank you.
When scandals are pushed under the rug and not let out in the open in the light, and held accountable, and no one is trying to stop what is going on, because things are continually getting swept under the rug, we cannot continue to allow that to happen. The city manager is responsible for day-to-day operations, yes, but the commission is his boss. And as a commissioner, you need to know what your city manager is doing and why he's doing it. If things are getting swept under the rug, that needs to stop. And the way we stop it is set the standard that these actions are not going to happen anymore. City manager is going to hold his departments accountable, going to hold his department heads accountable. And if that is not happening, then city manager's job can come up for a vote in a commission meeting. The people of Northport have made it clear with the last few elections that if commissioners were not doing their jobs, they were not going to be voted back in. We can do the same with the city manager, with the city attorney, and others who are not doing their jobs properly. These scandals cannot continue. I think the citizens review board could help with that. It could be sort of an advocate for our employees, for our departments. We could put firefighters there, police officers there, employees from each district, each operation there, to get a broad idea of what's going on, of what issues need to be brought to light. But the bottom line is, we can no longer tolerate any of these scandals, any of these backdoor, push-under-the-rug dealings going on. It will destroy our city at some point in time, and it has to stop with this commission coming in.
I'm having a debate with myself right now. Absolutely.
Since we're newbies to the area, can you all just take a moment and tell me what it is you guys do? What do you do for us, besides represent our zone?
Good question.
We have a city manager, what is it you, each of you does, on a daily basis, monthly basis, to represent the city?
They are not the city commissioners.
Okay. Her question is, I believe, and just correct me if I'm wrong, her question is, what does the city commission do for our city? What do you perceive your job if you are elected to be a commissioner? Does that make sense? Okay. We have a question, but Mr. Vargalata just pointed out a very glaring problem. I made a statement for Debbie, but I did not allow each of you to make your own statement about who you are and why you're here. Everyone... This is difficult. I gave Debbie the platform because Debbie had a very unfortunate situation. We've introduced the candidates, and through these questions, you will get to know who they are, hopefully at their core. I hope that none of you take offense to that. But we need to move along. And back to your question. I actually have that in my bag of hat, my hat bag. And we're going to move on now to the next two, the folks who did not speak on this last question, Jacqueline and Vanessa. And would you like to pick a question out of the hat? We've heard balanced development ad nauseam. But what does balanced development mean to you? From a developer's standpoint, they keep their eye on the bottom line. From an environmental standpoint, they keep their eye on the critters, the trees, the water sources, et cetera. And I believe that we can agree that the current requirements that we have for developers is not what citizens want. So, looking towards a more balanced development standpoint, what does it mean to you? Since Jacqueline Moore has not gone first, I will ask you to answer that question first.
Of course. Well, to me, balance is about win-win. So we need the environment to win and be sustainable and healthful for people, and all the creatures, and trees, and everything else that we really all do love, which is the main reason that many of us did come here. And we need the private sector, which is where the developers are, to be able to earn a living, to have a livelihood, and to do what they do. I believe we are at a transformational point. We do have a level of awareness and commitment here in Northport. For example, ending clearcutting, I'm not sure has been said anywhere else in our county or in our region, maybe it has, but clearly, we, the citizens, intend for clearcutting to stop. So the way change happens is to engage those that are involved in making it happen. Personally, I've already been talking to developer partners all around the region about this concept, and for them to be thinking about what would that mean to them? Because the private sector's view of what the impact of that is is different than our aesthetic view, potentially, and the love that we have. Not that they don't have a love for the environment, many are award-winning developers because they mitigate the impact in different ways. So my sense is that we need to find that third alternative of what does balance look like that allows the private sector to thrive, while we make sure our ULDC, our ordinances, our rules, the education process, whether it's someone new moving to the area, the real estate professionals, how do we educate and inform everyone that this is a standard in Northport, this is how we do what we do? You know, no organism can survive if it's not balanced. We can all be out of balance for a little bit, but once we're out of balance, we get sick. So so does a community, so does an environment, or so does a company. So keeping that as the underlying principle that involves the developers in asking, where do we go from here, what do we do? I'm more of a collaborator. Hi Joan? Is my two minutes up? Okay, thank you. Vanessa?
I'm not sure how you can, you know, elaborate more than what Mayor Moore has just said. I think that balance is not only the balance between development and citizens, what they feel is their level of standards, but we also have to look at the fiscal side of things. We are constantly complaining about how it is unaffordable to live in Northport, it's unaffordable to have commercial property in Northport, and all this plays a role into it. I've done the same, as Mayor Moore had mentioned, I've been talking to a lot of developers, trying to find out, how do we find some sort of compromise? I have found out that the tree ordinance as it exists is actually one of the most strictest tree ordinances in the state of Florida, in that it adds an extra $1,000 to the bottom line of a house in West Villages. It costs over $300,000 per cocoa plum, just recently. So all of those numbers are not born to the developer, they're born on the person who is purchasing that property, the person who is renting that property. We need to find a way that we can make sure that that balance is on each side and make Northport affordable again, because let's face it, folks, Northport's not affordable anymore. I never thought I'd live to see that day.
Thank you. Okay, next up is Sam Jones.
Well, if you thought the first one was long, here we go. This is real simple, just yes or no. Let's assume for a moment that you're a commissioner. You won. And you just received a professional analysis that you requested, and that analysis was concerning the privatizing of the solid waste function in the city. So that, and the analysis, now here's the important part, the analysis found that the level of service would increase if it was privatized, and the cost to the citizens would decrease if it were privatized. Would you, as a commissioner, approve privatizing solid waste? Or, yeah, approve the privatizing of solid waste? Just yes or no?
Andrew?
Don't have a microphone.
Oh. Can't answer them. Yes or no?
I would say yes, but it's saying if it existed, so if it did, yes.
What I, the question is, would I approve this data, this report, that says solid waste should be privatized? No.
No, not just based on one analysis like that.
This is an unfair question, and you know it, Sam, because we've been in this spot before. And absolutely not, no way. I don't believe in privatizing.
Thank you. Okay, Edie, could you pick a yes or no question, please, and read it? We still have things, yes, we do, okay. There are environmental specialists in the city and county of Sarasota and two in Charlotte County. The city of Sarasota has a position titled, quote-unquote, manager sustainability. The duties of such a position include facilitating the goals and objectives of the city's sustainability initiatives, environmental programs, and energy use policies. Would you support the city having such a position regardless of cost? Yes or no?
We'll start with one that looks confused.
Okay. I thought I was tracking till I heard the regardless of cost, because, you know, we have to be extremely diligent on cost as a decision-making factor.
If I could just interrupt for just a moment?
Sure.
I had a conversation with the person who asked this question, and I think I could probably add a little clarity to it. Regardless of cost is impossible, because you're playing with our money. Okay, so let's just assume that it's free. It's free. It's free.
It's free. And maybe it's more than one person, maybe it's a real community-involved group of people. We have so much expertise and brilliance and wisdom and, you know, education and credentials and people that know about all this stuff, so absolutely yes.
Yes, within our budget, yes.
This is for all of us, I'm taking it. We're not pulling names out of hats anymore.
Not on those questions. On a yes or no's.
Well, I think we first have to have those policies in place in order to do something like this. I think, yeah, if it's free, it's for me.
I can't see it being free, though. It's like, one extent, it's free, one extent, it's regardless of cost. It's a great program, but it almost sounds like high in the sky the way we're asked to vote on this.
You're not voting, it's in an effort.
But it's a concept, it's good.
It's a concept.
But, you know, I can't see somebody doing it for free, unless it was a volunteer, if it's a volunteer thing, it is free, absolutely.
I guess another way we would put it is if we had unlimited funds. If it's free or if we had unlimited funds, because we are just also stinking rich. And that's the regardless of cost, you know? Do you see that as a valid service that we should have in our community? Everybody with me on that one? Okay. Moving on, we're going to pull one, the names back in the box. Okay, pull out two names. And? Will you choose a question for me, please?
First is Andrew and Jacqueline.
And just a reminder, if you could stand up while you answer these questions, because the folks in the back can't see. There are lawsuits piling up against the city. How can the commission affect this?
Lawsuits are usually the result of something being done wrong. There should be an investigation, not only to see what was done wrong, but how to prevent it from happening again in the future. If you don't study the past, you repeat in the future. So we have to, with lawsuits, not only address the lawsuit itself, but the root cause, to understand whether it is...
Okay, the question is, how can the commission affect this?
We can hold it accountable. You have a lawsuit, you have to determine, as a commissioner, what agency, what individual caused this lawsuit? And you have to put pressure on it, to say that is unacceptable. Now, there's also frivolous lawsuits, so as a commissioner, you have to be, have the intelligence to differentiate between the real and the non-real. Do you have a follow-up on that? You look like you have a question.
No, no, I'm just, I'm listening and thinking.
Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Lawsuits are increasingly common in our world and in our environment, and I agree that cause and effect has to be determined. There are frivolous lawsuits. So the commission's responsibility is to be abreast of what the status is of lawsuits that have been filed and what is being done to adjudicate them or resolve them, and to the degree independent agencies are required to help look into issues if lawsuits have been filed against the city, because I was hearing it, lawsuits against the city, but not necessarily that are because someone in the city staff per se has done something wrong. Some people, you know, they just don't like our ordinance, or they don't think things are fair, or they think the city was unfair. So our litigious society makes it very interesting and very complex. To me, this is not black and white, but the commission's responsibility is to be aware of what is out there, what are we spending resources on, what are the cause and effect to the degree we can determine them, and how do we prevent them? And how do we engage the community to create an environment where the one responsibility we all have as individuals is that we have relationships with each other, that we are able to talk as neighbors? I get calls all the time that my neighbor's doing such and such and such and such, and I'm going to sue because he or she won't do whatever it is. Well, you know, I think that at a macro level, what I said is what I believe. I also think, as a community, we have an opportunity to create an environment here where it's less the norm as we grow. We're going to double our population in a couple of decades, so let's hold the vision that we're going to figure out how to be less the trend of litigiousness and more the how we figure things out as a community, which hopefully will keep them from being an outrageous number. Thanks. Thank you.
Edie? This is going to be a choose between the two. Restore, replace? Two possible answers. The buildings at Warm Mineral Springs are in major need of repair. Do you support restoring the existing buildings or replacing them? That's all four.
Oh, that's all four.
Go ahead. Oh, no, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Yes, that's you, you two.
I will lean towards restoration right now, because the buildings have historical significance, but I definitely want to see all the reports and all the analysis, and if it is not financially feasible, then we might be able to replace and still have some historical things left behind, because you have to be careful about the finances, but you cannot ignore the obvious history with those buildings.
Well, the answer is yes, restore, because I believe that we've taken great steps to make sure that we will be applicable for funding as far as grants and other things that the state will supply us with. So I believe that we should restore, but when we do restore, we do need to remember that we need to upgrade some of these things, so that we're in the 21st century.
It's time for a yes or no question, Edie. Yes or no, and all of you, we're going to be there. I meant that, too. All of you will be answering this. The Warm Mineral Springs property includes dozens of acres that are currently underdeveloped. Do you support limiting any development to park-type activities, i.e. no hotels or spas? Vanessa?
Hey, how about I go? No, I don't, I don't believe in limiting it. Well, first and foremost, I think that we need to do the study that's in the process to make sure that the land is developable, that there are no sinkholes underneath it, because it is one large sinkhole, and it, I mean, to put millions of dollars into a spa facility and have it sucked in the ground would not be a good choice of taxpayer dollars. So I think we need to make sure that that data comes back first. But I think it needs to be an economic driver as well. Let's face it, we have over $5 million invested in this, in this piece of property. We need to find a way to make sure that it comes back to us in some way, shape, or form. And the only way that I see that happening is a land lease purchase, or a land lease deal and the properties surrounding it, but I also want to see parkland. There's large pieces of property, but we have to make sure that it's revenue neutral.
I want to make sure that if we develop on here, that we're going to do it very intelligently and very carefully. We need to limit, I think, some things only because of the close proximity to the springs, the possibility for an environmental disaster if something goes wrong. You have very sensitive land in that region. We can have certain medical, maybe restaurant things in there, certain health entities, without doing a whole lot of damage, without taking up a whole lot of room, because you've got some residential areas nearby some of that acreage. So it limits what you can do. Don't limit everything, but let's just be very careful that we don't make a mistake. And definitely, let's look at the studies, any research, any outside research and tips that we can get from how other cities have done things. Look at how Look at how they've done things well or not, and then kind of set an approach from that.
We need a plan for Warm Mineral Springs, and I mentioned in a previous forum, I'd love for us to set a record for citizen engagement around this topic. Have so many hundreds or thousands of people become engaged in a process where we get very clear as a community, since we all own it, what do we want it to be? And it's the closest geographic physical jewel that speaks to the previous question about balance. Whatever we do, development, preservation, has to be balanced. Now, the private sector, assuming at some point there's some engagement with them for some kind of development, whatever we, the community, say we want it to be, are certainly not going to be willing to invest or do anything if they're not confident that that physical space that they're going to develop on is sustainable. So the data, the USGS survey that we just received, the highlights on, I think, Thursday, the data is coming in. So balance will be the key, but I invite all of us to be asking, what do we want it to be? And then stay tuned and be ready to jump in, in a variety of ways, an engagement process over the coming months, because it should be, and I think will be, a top priority. Thanks.
The cyclorama is a treasure. It has to be preserved. Surrounding buildings, I'm going to wait till what the study says connected, because they're in a little bit of this repair. My idea for Warm Mineral Springs may be a little bit different than others. I would like to see a museum there. I would like the museum to be linked to Little Salt Springs and be based on archaeology and Native American. Native American history and archaeology are drivers right now. High schools will come. I would like to bring in the Seminole Nation then to do a festival at Warm Mineral Springs by the museum. That will attract tourists from Siesta Key to come down to Warm Mineral Springs. So yes, I would like to see the buildings replaced, but especially the cyclorama because that is precious. Thank you.
Thank you. You pick a question, please? And if you can, please pick two names out of the box.
Andrew, I'm not picking on you. The universe is.
I don't mind being hecked on.
Jacqueline? Andrew? They're all the exact same songs.
Rebecca, you make the most interesting faces, I will say. Thank you. I know that was a compliment.
It was.
Okay, this is, this has many facets. And I'll preface the question by saying that, in my mind, the position of city commissioner is not, I'll repeat, not a part-time job. And the person asking says, "Do you believe that commissioners should keep regular hours at City Hall? And would you support returning at least one meeting to the evening?" I'm personally ambivalent about keeping hours, however. If it will be more helpful, more useful for commissioners to have office hours, I'm totally open to that. I can see the merit if folks know that commissioners are going to be, maybe it's not every day, all day, or maybe it is. So I'm totally open to that. I just haven't really thought of it deeply, but I'm open to it, of course. And I'm already on record, very much interested in and supporting returning to some evening meetings. So absolutely. Thank you.
I don't like the word "office hours." A commissioner should not be hidden in an office. They should be out among you, the public, whether attending charity events, going out to different organizations to get a little of the people, to get the feedback from you.
But the question from the community member says, "Are you, do you support..."
I would say full-time, but not office hours, because I don't want to be in the office because the job is outdoors.
I understand.
So I would use those same hours, but to be reaching you. Because I think if you stay in the office, how many people will actually come to City Hall when you're working during 9:00 to 5:00? Some will. But I'd rather go out to you because that is more important. It's the commissioner serving you, you not coming to the commissioner. And as far as evening meetings, I would want almost all of the meetings at evening, as many as possible, because that way everybody can attend who works or who does not. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Lovely Lily. Will be Vanessa and Cory.
We're getting it. We're getting it.
What is your plan to motivate area investors to view Northport as a community worthy of their investments towards many of the communities stated once? Would you support an increase of taxes in order for the community to enjoy full ownership of the amenities they wanted?
No, by all means. I'm still trying to roll out the question.
Well, I'm going to read it again. What is your plan to motivate area investors to view Northport as a community worthy of their investments? Towards many of the communities stated once? I think what the questioner here is asking, and I did not have a discussion with that person, but I think what they're asking is, what is your plan to motivate investors to bring services, businesses, that the community is interested in having, instead of another pizza joint or...
Ice skating rink.
Ice skating rink, or bowling alley, or museum, or whatever the case may be. How do, what, how do you plan to motivate investors? Okay, yeah, there we go.
The way I think that we can motivate area investors is if we will be able to, excuse me, willing to reach out to them, willing to reach out to neighboring governments, willing to reach out to our economic development boards, task forces, and working within our commission, within the neighboring governments, to market what we have. We have, well, the internet is developable. Now, we have some zoning we're going to have to work toward, work through if you want to build bigger things. And we have to work with some of our property owners that we have now. They have some land, especially back in Toledo Glade there, behind, in the Commerce Park area, that we could use for something. But we've got to get those private property owners together. So that's a step we have to take. And then for the investors is, you cannot tax them out of here. You cannot have impact fees and other things so high that they're just being driven out. You know, you have to have that balance. And, you know, you have to look at the neighboring communities. And I understand that we're different than they are, and we have different levels of service, but if your fees and your requirements are so difficult and so much harder than neighboring communities, people are going to look elsewhere. So market our strengths, balance our taxes, our impact fees in those entities, and then we can work toward getting a lot of these things. I think it's just a matter of time before we have a commission that's going to work well, staff, and everybody's going to get on board, and the citizens, and we're going to have the opportunity to have a lot of these things, like ice skating rinks, theaters, businesses, jobs, and things of that nature. And the second part of the question was, would I support increasing taxes? I don't support increasing taxes. From what I've spoken with, people I've spoken with in the community, there are a lot of people that are still struggling, a lot of people still living paycheck to paycheck. I don't believe they can afford to have more of their tax dollars taken away.
I think the first start in motivating developers to come in and invest in our area is by regaining our respect, regaining our, our ability to be taken seriously within the region. That's, that's first and foremost. Second of all, is that we need to look at our economic development department, which is actually not necessarily a department, it's two people who are underneath the city manager. We need to actually create an economic development division, have a true economic development manager, and have people who are underneath them so that they can actually go out and solicit types of, the types of things that people want to see, like pools and, and parks and roller rinks. But I think there's enough money in the budget that is being shifted here and there that we can do it without raising taxes. So these are very specific things that I want to see done. I want us to rebuild the relationships as well as our economic development department and truly fund it the way it should be.
Thank you. Okay, we're going to have another yes or no question, and it is yes or no, okay? Yes, no? And yes, I'm putting you, I'm putting you in a box by asking you to choose in the affirmative or the negative. And I apologize for that, but what it does is it will give then the opportunity for citizens to speak to you about these things in particular and, you know, bring you to expand on your ideas about these things with them across the table while you're having coffee or a sandwich.
But not in the office.
But not in the office.
A yes or no. Do you see absentee landlords as a problem in our growing city?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
I think that's what we call a consensus. Okay, all hands up if you would like to take a health break. Five minutes? Get up, stretch your legs, run to the little girls' boys' room, get a drink.
The connection's a little weak. I'm going to try to fix it, and then I got to put on the spare batteries, so you might see it moving around, shaking a little bit.
I'm not gonna have my cell phone.
Just so that you know what's going on, they're taking a quick break, it's about five minutes, and they're gonna be right back. So that's why you're just sitting here looking at the audience right now.
Just so that you know what's going on, they're taking a quick break, it's about five minutes, and they're gonna be right back. So that's why you're just sitting here looking at the audience right now. It should be about, I don't know, another three minutes.
I'm trying to get it all down.
I'm just so happy to be here.
Yeah, I'm trying to get it all down.
I thought each other somewhere maybe, I don't know, but I probably think so.
Oh, okay, oh, sorry, you're on that one.
I'm ambitious.
I think I go in and grab stuff every once in a while.
Do you share yourself?
I try, I try to look forward, but I got so many different needs.
What are you kind of, like, something to know when I share?
Yeah, I'm seeing anything that's like, uh, or I'm gonna grab, just shoot me an email through my page, or I can go check it out.
Everyone, come and join the party. Did we lose a bunch of people? That's a shame, we got a lot more questions. All right. An audience member just asked me if there was going to be another event like this, and I said, "Well, it won't be held by me." And she asked, "Who does this?" And I decided to answer that for everyone rather than just for her. Anybody can do this. It's not cheap, and, but anybody can do it. They also, candidates will probably have meet and greets where you can go and get more information from them directly. You can follow up with them here today and ask them information, how to reach them, how to sit down and talk with them one-on-one. Oftentimes, the chamber just had one of these, organizations like that will have these. I hope there's another one because with Debbie out of town, with Hank's not being able to attend, I'm sure that, you know, everybody would like to hear from them. So with that, we will move along. It was brought to my attention that there was a yes or no question asked, and I didn't interrupt and say, "Please, just yes or no," and that three people did not answer in the affirmative or the negative. So I'm going to ask that again, and I, so that we get a clear yes or no. Okay? And you've already, you know, basically given your feelings about this question, but it was brought that only one person said yes or no. The Warm Mineral Springs property includes dozens of acres that are currently underdeveloped. Do you support limiting any development to park-type activities, i.e. no hotels or spas? And Andrew?
No, I'm trying to picture.
Yes or no?
Well, you said no hotels, spas. I did say I would have the museum there, so that would be a building, so I would have to say I would have the building there.
The question is, would I limit it? No. No.
I think I said it before, no.
Okay, thank you. And names out of the bucket. Who's next?
Should I just say Andrew now?
Cory, yay!
This Hughes, would you be so kind? All right. This is an audience member question. Forbes has rated Northport as a top-rated investment city. What do you feel has kept investors from bringing the many-wanted amenities which would benefit the entire community? Ladies first. Thank you. There has been tremendous growth in Northport, frankly. I have current data with me, and I have a handout about the job growth in our city. So growth is happening. As far as us having what we want, a lot of that happens through organic growth. Businesses look at population, they look at demographics, they look at income, they look at surrounding areas, they look at saturation, they look at how close businesses of the same kind are to them. So a lot of what happens, while it is beyond our control, quote-unquote, as a city, it is imperative that we create the kind of environment that causes businesses to want to come here. So, that's all, stop there, but I don't want to belabor.
We have seen a lot of growth. I would like to see growth that is more sustainable. What I mean by that is more sustainable jobs, sustainable businesses, instead of just the minimum wage, although that is a part of a healthy economy, it cannot be the entire part of your economy. So we need to have more diversified growth, I think. And one of the things that I see that's keeping that from happening is the environment we have had in our city hall as of recently. Investors and businesses don't want to come into this environment. I heard, for example, the gentleman with Skyzone up in Sarasota, they do birthday parties with parachutes and bungee jumps and things like that, I think. They've been interested in coming to Northport, but they don't want to work with what's going on right now, our current environment. So you have to set that environment up that is inviting. And then with, you have to be willing to work with your businesses, your developers, you don't cater to them all the time, but you have to be willing to work with them and come together on a solution. And that's, I think, what we've been really missing for the last four or so years, is that there's been that lack of relationship, there's been that lack of working together. And once we get that back then, I think we'll start moving forward at a pretty nice pace.
Thank you. Phil, would you please? And I guess this next question is going to be for Vanessa and Andrew. According to the Floridians Society for Ethical Eco-Tourism, "Authentic ecotourism is responsible travel to nature areas that conserves the environment and improves the well-being of local people. With that said, how would you envision ecotourism being promoted and developed in Northport?" Ladies first.
I think we have a perfect opportunity to enhance ecotourism with our Orange Hammock. I would like to see the city become more invested in that actual property so that they have a dog in the fight, as you might say. I think that we can take some of that property, which I know that they claim is undevelopable, but there are portions of that property, because I'm very familiar with it, that you can actually put rental cottages on and enhance that nature versus, you know, populous, what do you call it, you know, community feeling for what's good outside and while not destroying the area. So I would like to see us really utilize that land for ecotourism. And then Warm Mineral Springs will also, you know, sustain some sort of ecotourism. So I think we have things in the working that we can utilize and just jump off of to go ahead and get, reach that goal.
Ecotourism, you have to have some place for people to stay and go. Again, Orange Hammock would be an ideal solution for having there, but also incorporate into Orange Hammock a total environmental approach. Have a little environmental center that teaches, have something doing on organic growing, so it's a learning center, that when people come down there to do ecotourism, they have more than just nature, they see how humans interact with nature. The same principle could be applied to Warm Mineral Springs. One area that nobody mentions, Northport is, I believe, the only city with a state forest within our boundaries. That could be used for ecotourism. It's a large area where natural resources, flora and fauna exist there, and it's unique to us, and we're not utilizing it to its fullest extent, and people can visit, go camping, and really enjoy the environment. That's my vision, and we should welcome it and just reasonably. And I don't want to use the word balance because the word balance, I thought was banned, and I keep hearing it said. So, yeah, I know. But that state forest is something unique to Northport that nobody utilizes. Our waterways is a second area. We have so many canals, and that could be opened up to kayaking. I'm on Parks and Recs, they were about to have kayaks being available for rental, and that will open things up for us. Thank you.
Vanessa?
I, there was something I forgot to add to my answer, and that was that I know that Nancy Dieter, while she was in legislation, she was working really hard on getting funding for an education program in the Little Salt Springs. And since she's become county commissioner, she still thinks that that's a, that's a major influence to ecotourism. So as a commissioner, I would like to support that idealism, and that would be another way that we can enhance that.
Thank you. Carrie, would you please, and we need to know names, shake them up really good.
Cory!
You really, you need to shake that bucket more. Longer, I don't know. Okay. Tiny houses are being considered for many solutions slash options for housing. Currently, the ULDC does not allow for tiny houses, and that was in quotes. What is your stance on a tiny house community?
I think a tiny house community could be really great for Northport. We can work with our codes and our zoning to make it happen. This could be an area, and this is some of what I've seen it envisioned as, as its own little community, where the people take care of each other, they take care of their community, they work together. This could be a community for, you know, seniors who want to downsize, for people who just want less house space, less yard, less stuff to take care of, for college students trying to move away from home but don't want to live in an apartment or on a dorm. There are so many things you can do with tiny houses, so much potential there. And for us to be the only community in the region to have its very own tiny home community, that's gonna bring people here, that's gonna bring business here, that's gonna bring a whole bunch of stuff here. We might get on HGTV or something. It would just be really cool, and I'm fully on board with this, and I just want to thank all those just private citizens out in the community and other legislators who are actively working towards this right now, and if I'm elected, I can't wait to work with them to get this done.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I am totally in support of this, and I'm looking forward to getting a couple of new colleagues on board once we're elected in November, so we can move on this, and I echo what Mr. Hutchinson has said. It's a unique, it's a lifestyle, it's cool, young people like it, old people like it. So I think we're definitely on the path, and we do have community activists, some who are sitting in the front row right here, that have done extensive integrative thinking and proposal-making, ready for a commission to listen about how we can move forward with this, so stay tuned. Thank you. And this is going to be, I know we're gonna still have the next two chosen and a half chosen, but this is for everyone.
Canal Watch, quote-unquote, is a proactive component of the Cape Coral City's canal management effort. Their goals are to educate local homeowners about water quality issues, open up communication between citizens and water managers, and increase residents' sense of ownership of our common resources. Each month, volunteers collect environmental data and water samples throughout the city. The samples and data are then brought to Cape Coral's Water Quality Laboratory for analysis. This volunteer monitoring process provides information about canal dynamics throughout the city, enabling better management of our waters. And I want us to keep in mind that our waters from our canals moves to the Mikeyahatchee Creek, then on to the Mikeyahatchee River, and then on to Charlotte Harbor. So it's important that we keep our healthy waterways healthy for man, wildlife, ecotourism, and local economies. So regarding maintaining healthy waterways, would you support a volunteer citizen's group involved in monitoring our waterways, such as what Cape Coral does? This, uh, sorry. This will help raise awareness as to how locals can help keep our canals healthy, such as limiting, fertilizing our lawns, et cetera. Thank you.
First one to touch the mic was Ms. Moore. First one to touch the mic was Ms. Moore.
I absolutely support that. The more engagement, the better. We have every generation here in Northport. We need the young people, we need the old people, and everybody in between. Everybody has gifts, and everybody can do something for somebody. So, and our water, obviously, is such a precious, we cannot live without it, and the more engagement, the better. So yes, I would absolutely support an effort to have citizens help us with that.
You only have to look at recent headlines. Mosaic, the fish kill at the beaches. Fertilizer causes algae blooms, red tides. Mosaic at the sinkhole. I would welcome it. It's not only welcomed, it's necessary, because it can prevent a tragedy. But it also educates people, how many people fertilize their lawns and do not realize the damage it does. I came from an area many years ago, around Chesapeake Bay. Maryland had such strict laws, but the Saskatchewan River in Pennsylvania had none, and it really impacted the Chesapeake Bay. Poor Charlotte Harbor, our canals, our river, they're a life source. They have to be protected, not only to protect the resource, but to protect ourselves. Thank you.
Yes, I would support this. If you don't have clean and sustainable water, you can forget about anything else you want to do. Because water is a life source for animals, for people, for everything. There's no question, the data's come out, that pesticides, fertilizers cause harm. And we need to, you know, have people on a volunteer board, something like that, going out there, taking data, seeing what we're doing wrong, what we're doing right, how we can improve. Because clean water is an absolute necessity of any community that wants to call itself a playful city or a city that can achieve anything. Because you're achieving nothing if your water is no good.
I think I've already made it very clear that if it's free, it's for me. So any citizen board is good for me. But I think that we need to be very clear that we already have, you know, this is where that institutional knowledge comes in again. We have ordinances that are already in place that help us with some of these things. For instance, we have a fertilizer ordinance that was mirrored out off of Sarasota counties and the states. So you can't use certain fertilizers on your lawn. So that's already kind of been addressed. Our water department is phenomenal at actually getting out the information on being conscious of water use. So to allow them maybe a little further stretch, as Edie had said, in the Cape Coral area, doing something that's more focused on the canal system, maybe we need to look at that. But I'm not exactly sure how it's monitored, but I do know that the city, or I believe the state, actually monitors the water and its quality at this time. And I know that because they were out at Miaka nearly monthly at some point in time, so I can't imagine that that's gone to wayside. So we have some of these things already in place, but can we enhance it? We can always enhance it. I mean, everybody can always do better, nobody's perfect. And so I absolutely support that.
Thank you. I've just spoken to a few in the audience, and I want to remind the candidates. Be cognizant when you answer these questions. And I'm not saying that you're not, okay, but I'm praying that you keep this in your thoughts as you answer these questions. Substance, substance, substance. I like chocolate cake. That's been my joke. I like chocolate cake. Well, that doesn't tell you much, does it? I like German chocolate cake, I like chocolate cake with white frosting. Substance, substance, substance. Moving forward, it's now time for Vanessa and Andrew, and a question coming out of the hat. Thank you. Okay, as has been discussed many times, Northport wasn't plotted to include industry. The vision was for Northport to be a bedroom community. Much discussion of bringing a Walmart or Amazon distribution center to our city has occurred, and this conversation circles around and ends in the same place every time. So, do you see it as a possibility that we could retain our bedroom community and still build a tax base to avoid skyrocketing homeowners' taxes? And that's for Vanessa and Andrew. Andrew?
We have to look to what the future will look like in jobs. In a previous debate, I brought up the hive. Everybody know what the hive is? The last time I did, only one person raised their hand. Thank you. Another different person though. The hive is an industrial incubator. They have 3D printers, technology. They share their office. There is a lady there working there. She lives in Northport, she works for Disney. She lives in Northport, her company gets contracts right now from Legoland. That is the job of the future. You can live in Northport and work for a company in Orlando or in New York. It is a high-paying jobs. There's a music studio that opened up recently, that I went for a chamber event. They're doing jam sessions. The singer is in Norway, the drummer is in Canada, the guitarist is in Northport. That's the future. That's what we should celebrate. We should encourage these items to grow. In addition to that, we should look at the traditional base. Why are we not getting it? Well, one, land, but two, we're not building relationships. Relationships with Sarasota County, relationships with Tallahassee, relationships with Washington DC and the business community. Whether you're trying to get a business here or get a job, it's your personal relationship. As a commissioner, you can be an ambassador to Northport to bring these jobs here. I ran into a gentleman, David Kennedy, former principal of Sarasota High School, the founder of Sarasota Middle Military Academy. We built a relationship. We're going to try to get and restart the military academy to be built in Northport. That's how things get done. That is one of the differences that I will bring to the commission. I've worked a lifetime in the business community, and I know how to build relationships. Thank you. Sorry about that.
Yeah. First and foremost, I don't agree with the analysis. We do have Walmart, and we do have industry. And we can pretty much thank the man sitting over here, Mr. Sam Jones, for making sure we had those things. We have a plotted-out community that began as a bedroom community, but it isn't anymore. And let's be realistic, you can't stay a bedroom community and keep your taxes low. It is not possible. When you can figure out how to do that, please let me know, because by all means, I'm in. You know, I want some sort of balance. I do believe that we have that with the different types of areas that we have within the city of Northport. You can live in the estates where you're, you know, there's not a house for five acres, three acres. You can live in the gated communities where the neighbors, you can share coffee out the window. And then you have, you know, other neighborhood homes. That's the beauty of Northport, it's diverse. And I think the more diverse your economy is, the healthier we'll be.
Thank you. Names out of a box. Thank you.
Andrew again.
Vanessa.
Jacqueline.
Vanessa and Jacqueline. Well, this one says, "We are all human." That's how it starts. What it says. Miss obvious. Have you made any promises during your campaign that you now realize was a mistake? Or promises that you made without having a full understanding of the issue and now regret and have changed your position?
Is that specific to during the campaign or in your lifetime? Because, boy, do I have some regrets in my lifetime. You don't have enough time for those. No, during my campaign, no. I am very, very careful to not make promises. And the reason is that you can't do it alone. It's a five-person board. You need three to get anything accomplished. I know this. And no matter how many times you hear from other opponents who say, "I'm going to do this, I'm going to do that," that is not true. Don't believe it. You will do nothing without two other people.
I agree, and promises. So my platform in 2014 is the same as it is now with a little shift. Vision, jobs, and community pride or community building. So I believe I am very consistent in focusing on that and engaging the community on that. Having said that, as a human being, I have learned that I was too trusting and a little naive around some issues related to access to city hall, for example. So I've learned, I have already been making corrections to that. And it's very humbling, it goes with the territory of learning. And so, yeah. Learning. Who would like to hear that question answered by the other two candidates? Hands, show of hands? Why not? Yeah, I think that's a good one.
The first regret I had was entering the race too late, but I was suffering from a back injury, so I only got in June. And I don't feel my messages got out. As far as making promises, I have not really made any promises that I don't intend to keep. I look out, I went down Price Boulevard, I went door to door, and I know some of you live on Price. I know my opponent suggested building bridges to connect roads in between Price and I-75 to alleviate the traffic there. I had to tell him the truth. Price has traffic on it, because there are two high schools, two middle schools, a firehouse, an emergency room. It is going to be eventually expanded. Probably not in the next six years, because I-75 is being expanded and 41. But if you want to be a commissioner, you have to look out for all of Northport, not individual areas. Another question?
No. Cory?
I don't think I've made a lot of promises that I regret. A lot of times I will state intentions, like, "I intend to do this," or "I intend to work together to do this." But one of the things I'm trying to do is I'll put out an idea or a thought or something, and then have commentary on it so that we can come together for a solution. Because that's how you work together. I had not been about saying that I alone will do anything, because I know you can't do that. So most of the time, I put out things, I put out statements or questions and thoughts in hopes that I'll get feedback and we can all work together. And that will be my intention as a commissioner, to have that togetherness and that cooperation and collaboration. So I've been very careful and too tempered that.
Thank you. Bucket time.
Andrew. And Jacqueline.
We only have four options, so it's, you know, it is what it is. Andrew and who?
Jacqueline.
Jacqueline, thank you. That's just one. Okay, this is a question from an audience member. And I think the question, I think a questioner for this one, this is near and dear to my heart. I think we've, I touched on it in the past, and it, no, thank you. Are you in support of bringing back the animal control position? So that we don't have, so we don't have to pay for cages? And I think that the questioner is asking, because, I don't know if you're aware, if you have a nuisance animal, or let's say a raccoon or something like that, if you need, previously if you needed a cage, a humane trap for them, our animal control officer would just swing by your house, drop it off, and then come pick it up as soon as the said animal was trapped. As it stands now, you have to drive up to Sarasota, the far ends of Bee Ridge, give them some money, come back, and then return the trap with the animal. So, it's a change. And if you will.
Well, that's a simple answer. I was there when you were protesting it, when we had the animal control, and I was there at your meetings. So absolutely, I want to bring it back. I was opposed to getting rid of it.
The question is open to bringing it back. I am open, I'm absolutely open to bringing it back. I'm in the process of starting a deep analysis around what's actually occurred, because I don't know exactly on a deep level yet what that is, but I'm open to that and will do that. I do think some learning has occurred and needed to occur about the impact of the cages, especially for elderly folks or people with financial challenges. That was not anticipated, to the best of my knowledge. I didn't think to ask that question, so that's a new question that needs to be asked. And then finally, I would say, in my humble opinion, and I do not have data to substantiate this, the reason we have nuisance animals, specifically cats and dogs, a major reason, is because we, as a community, are not responsible in spaying our pets. So I want to see a community-based plan where we are going to help take responsibility to prevent these poor creatures from being born when they're going to end up being killed. So I think it's a two-pronged thing. The government needs to fix the issues we just talked about, and we, as a community, need to figure out how to keep these poor innocent creatures from being born when nobody's going to take care of them. Thanks. Thank you. Okay. That was Andrew and Jacqueline. Now we've got Cory and Vanessa. Do you wish, sir?
Uh-oh. We have to answer two?
Okay, "Do you believe the city should have purchased Warm Mineral Springs without a solid understanding of deficiencies, budget, and plan to restore the facility?" Cory?
No, not at that time. There was not a clear plan, in my opinion, a feasible plan, for what they wanted to do, how we were going to do it. Not necessarily against a purchase at some point, but right then, I think it did not go very well. I think it was not a good idea. Hindsight, of course, being 2020. I think that moving forward, we need to make sure in any further deals we get ourselves involved in, we need to know every aspect we can about everything going into it, so we do not make this mistake again.
Now, we're really going back in that calendar brain of mine, because this is a long time ago. And if I remember correctly, at the time, we were kind of under the gun, that something was going to happen with the springs itself. And our concern was that the springs was going to go to development. And so we didn't really have that timeframe to create that joint planning agreement like we had wanted. So I remember as the chairman at the time, I worked with Shannon Staub, who was the chairman at the time for the county, and we had an initial plan. We had this conceptual plan of what we were going to do with the two governments. The problem was is that once it went through, an entirely different government took place on both boards that did not follow through with that concept or sign anything that was an actual joint planning agreement. And so because of things that happened, it didn't work out. But do I, I don't believe that the citizens wanted us to purchase that property. But do I, I don't believe that the citizens wanted us to purchase that property. So I, as a citizen representative, did not vote for that purchase. I did not agree with that purchase. I, as an individual, as a person, who say I was not on the commission, absolutely found that there was a reason to purchase that property, to prevent it from development, because that ground is extremely important.
Thank you. I had two questions pulled. I realized when I looked at the second question, which I was going to just ask, that it was a question that we'd already asked, it somehow ended up twice in my basket here. Putting this together was not easy. I guess we need to pull some names. Gosh, who would it be this time?
Cory! It was different.
There are employees on the inside, city employees, who have said that it's not what you know, but who you know, when it comes to getting a job in Northport. Understanding that the commission isn't involved in the hiring process, what are your feelings on this good old boy network that has long existed in the city?
I'll say that many organizations have this problem. That doesn't make it any less of an issue and it is unfortunate. I've heard this feedback as well. And I do believe that this is occurring. I am not in favor of any good old boy network, any go-along-to-get-along system. We need a fair system that does not simply reward who you know. It's about what you know, what you will do, what your intentions are, not who you know. That's what needs to be rewarded. So we need to set that policy as a commission. Now, we can't hire individual employees, but we can set some standards and policy for how the hiring is done by the city manager. And there needs to be a system in place that it's just not about who you know. There needs to be a restriction there that it is fair and balanced for everyone. We will get more diverse employees that way. We will get employees that are highly qualified and we will have a better city because of it. And employees that are there and coming in will feel rewarded, respected, and they will stay. We will hire more people maybe. It will be a better environment overall.
Well, I have to disagree with my opposition here because there are policies in place and most of them are Florida state statute. The other thing is that we have a human resource department now, which we haven't had in a long time. And I believe that that's going to help with implementing these policies. And let's be realistic, does anyone know of anywhere, specifically the way the economy is today, that you can find a job just based on your merit and not by someone you know? Because it has been very tough out there for the populace to find employment, unless it's someone they know, unless it's a way that they can reach that management area and get to the doorstep.